What do you get for sixteen forty shadow court? Sir, are you there for sixteen forty shadow court?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Madeline. I got confirmation from four people, I didn't get response.
We, he's always like. All right, we're gonna get started, it's six oh one, we're trying to be punctual here. We're gonna call the speeding to order for the zoning board of appeals on April first, twenty twenty-one. Welcome everyone, either via Zoom or in person. Allow me to read the preamble quickly. The zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, the sign ordinance, and developmental and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the superior court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision is rendered. And with that, we will begin the bulk of the meeting. With the agenda items, is there, anybody look at the previous, first let's do a quick roll call. Show who's here so far, Claire, Tara, myself, and Ryan. And I believe Artie may be in transit, but we have enough for a quorum. Okay? Anybody have the, where's my, anybody have any? Thank you. Second in? We have a motion and a second? All those in favor of approving last month's minutes, say aye? Let the record show that Ellen is also in attendance? No worries, no worries at all? Any organizational procedural items, I don't believe there are any, nor are there any unfinished business, so we'll proceed with the new business. ZBA twenty-one dash ten, Catherine Duncan, homeowner of four six oh three Holliston Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three six oh. Request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer to install backyard fence. With that, staff, would you walk us through that?
Can you all see the presentation? No? Okay.
Let me just editorialize a bit, I think the new format and template that the city has derived has been, is excellent, excellent, so. Beyond this, this nice color cover page, the rest of it is readability and everything else is improved, so, thanks for that.
Glad to hear that, Jennifer in communications, I will pass that compliment along to her. One last technical difficulty. I'm gonna be honest, I might be the youngest person in this room, but I'm not the most tech savvy. Ginger, hello, thank you. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Now we can officially start the first presentation, hello everyone. The first case on the agenda is ZBA twenty-one dash ten, forty-six oh three Holliston Road. The applicant, Catherine Duncan, homeowner, request a variance to construct a fence in the stream buffer. On the left is the site plan, as you can see, the homeowner is proposing a black aluminum fence along the street-facing portion, and then a vinyl-coated chain link along the side and rear. The fence does encroach into the city buffers, but not the twenty-five foot state buffer. These are the existing conditions on the site, as you can see, there is a moderately steep slope to the rear, and only a small portion of flat backyard area. The proposed fence will essentially be almost no disturbance. It's a very minimally invasive improvement that will not affect the functionality of the buffer at all. The fence will also create a safer and more enjoyable backyard space for the homeowners. For these reasons, staff requests, or excuse me, staff finds the request to meet the criteria for a variance and recommends approval subject to these three conditions you see listed here, essentially requiring them to be in compliance with their site plan, and that they can only construct it with hand tools, and that they have to do this within one year of the granting of the variance. That's all I have for you on this case this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is Catherine Duncan or representative of the applicant here to speak on their behalf? You may come to the podium, please state your name and address.
My name is Catherine Duncan, and I'm the homeowner of four six oh three Holliston Road. I think that she had a great job explaining the stance of this. I do have a steep hill in the backyard, and I'm looking to be able to safely enjoy the backyard without worrying about somebody potentially falling down that back hill. And we're just keeping the level portion fenced off and staying out of that twenty-five foot state buffer.
Okay, and there's no, no disturbance, nothing, no disturbances, no trees, no removals of anything there?
No trees need to be removed.
Just to clarify that, okay.
And it will be all handled.
Okay. Anyone else here, if you're done, anyone else here to speak in favor of the applicant? All right, nobody online, I assume? No opposition to this, I didn't see any received staff, and I don't see any hands raised online. So with that, we'll close the public comment and ask the board for any questions. Standing there, board? Do I have a motion? Tara votes to approve, do I have a second?
I second.
Hold on seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, ZBA twenty-one dash ten is approved, thank you. Welcome, Artie. The second item of the new business this evening is ZBA twenty-one dash eleven, Amy Litback, a homeowner at fifty sixty-nine Hidden Branches Drive, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight, request a variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy-eight, to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer to install a backyard fence, very similar to the prior application, but staff, please walk us through this.
Yes, sir, similar request, in that they are requesting to encroach into the seventy-five foot stream buffer to build a fence. On the right there is the site plan, you can see that the fence would be just a standard black aluminum fence. However, this one is a little bit different, because it does encroach within the twenty-five foot state buffer. However, a state buffer variance is not necessary, because the state exempts fences from their buffer regulations. These are the existing conditions, as you can see, in the bottom right-hand corner, the stream buffer encompasses a majority of their backyard. Again, this fence would be minimally intrusive to the buffer, and would not affect the functionality of the buffer. Without the approval of the variance, the homeowners would be prevented from constructing a functional fence, which is a standard improvement for most homeowners. For this reason, staff recommends approval of the request, again, subject to these three conditions you see listed on the screen. That's all I have for this case.
Okay. Thank you. Is the homeowner or representative here this evening to speak, or on Zoom? Behind the, behind the post. Hello?
Hi, I'm Amy Litback, the homeowner at fifty sixty-nine Hidden Branches Drive. We would like a fence, we have two dogs, lots of children, would like to provide some protection for that, back there for both, for all the kids and also the dogs. Any questions?
All right now?
Okay.
Thanks, Amy. We have one public comment that would like to, Bill, would you like to approach the podium, speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I'm Bill Grossman, five oh six one, Hidden Branches Drive. I'm on the other side of the stream. And this is just a little wet water stream at this point, that starts in the buffer behind the branches, up against Dunwoody Village commercial area. After it gets to the bottom of the hill and goes through the branches club area, it gets a little bigger, and it eventually becomes Marsh Creek and goes into the Chattahoochee. I fully support this fence, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else want to speak in favor? All right, any opposition? I think there was, and previously submitted, I don't see any right now. So we'll close the public discussion, board, any questions?
I think it needs to be on. They're on? Oh, okay. Yeah, we just want people at home to be able to hear. Yes, can you see my mouse on the screen? So this is the dashed line here, this is the marking of the seventy-five foot stream buffer. This is the fifty foot, and this is the twenty-five foot, and then this, oops. There we go, is that better? I did. It's just not updating on this one. So, the city has its own total seventy-five foot buffer. The first twenty-five foot is also regulated by the state. Normally, to encroach within the state buffer, you would also have to get a state buffer variance in addition to the city buffer variance. However, the state specifically exempts fences from their state buffer variance. So they don't have to get a variance to build a fence in the state buffer, but you do for the city buffer.
Right, right.
They're not specific about the type of fence, they just say, as long as. So the crux of the state buffer requirements for when a variance is required is if there's, I'm sorry if there's feedback there. If there's a certain amount of disturbance, so you can build a fence as long as it's gonna be minimally intrusive. If you have to build a fence, and you're gonna have to get a bobcat in there, take down trees, take out vegetation, that's when it would trigger a variance, but it would be for the land disturbance, not for the fence itself. A wooden fence would be absolutely acceptable, a fence such as this with a, you know, just a metal aluminum fence, totally acceptable.
That's a valid question, you'd think there might be a distinction there, yeah, yeah. Yep. Yep. Board, any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve ZBA twenty-one dash eleven. Per the, if staff could put the
Thank you for reading those.
Three requirements up here to comply with the site plan dated February tenth twenty-one, that the fence is constructed with hand tools only, and that if construction hasn't commenced within one year of this variance approval, that the approval is void.
Excellent, do we have a second, Tara? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unless they're online, there aren't any, okay. All right, ZBA twenty-one dash eleven is passed, thank you. Last new business of the evening, ZBA twenty-one dash twelve, Venture Communities, owner of sixteen forty Shadow Court, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. Request a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section two six nine, to encroach into the side yard setback with retaining wall.
I do just wanna point out, before I start this next presentation, if the previous applicants, you're, you're free to go if you would like. Unless you wanna hang out afterwards and chat. Good night, everybody. Okay, so the last case on our agenda is ZBA twenty-one dash twelve, sixteen forty Shadow Court. And they are seeking a variance to allow a retaining wall in the side setback. These are the existing conditions on the site. To the left is a photo, as you can see, the wall has technically already been constructed. It's about four feet tall, and is approximately three and a half feet from the side property line. You can see that it's highlighted in red in the site plan on the right. Also, you can see on the site, site plan slash survey, behind the highlighted red wall is another retaining wall. That has been existing, probably there for many, many years. When they demoed the original house, that wall was also there, they never took out that wall. The house is now gone, and they're doing a new build here, so just for a little bit of background. So these are more photos of the existing conditions, like I said, this is a site that's under construction, they're doing a new build. And this is just some photos of the backyard, just to give you an idea of what's happening on the property. As illustrated in the previous slides, there is a slope between the adjacent neighbor sixteen thirty-two Shadow Court and the subject lot sixteen forty Shadow Court. The retaining wall holds back this slope, again, there's another retaining wall there that's been existing for a long time, that serves that very same purpose. One thing that I think is important to note, is that this wall could technically be considered through the special administrative permit process, and it would meet that approval criteria for a special administrative permit. However, due to the fact that the wall was constructed without a permit, and because it had an impact on the neighbors, the director deemed it would be best for this to go through a public process, thus necessitating the variance request. The applicant has taken the proper steps to mitigate those negative impacts of their construction on the adjacent neighbors. All of the neighbors that submitted opposition originally have retracted that opposition based on the applicant's willingness to work with them. And then lastly, the removal of the wall would require a brand-new grading plan, it would result in increased land disturbance, and land disturbance that staff finds to be unnecessary, and it would negatively impact the use and enjoyment of a flat and level backyard for the future homeowner. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval of the request, and we don't recommend any conditions, again, because the wall is existing, so it would just be allowed to remain as is. That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you, would the applicant like to also address the board and state their case?
Just two brief comments, I'm Sam Sparks on behalf of the applicant. The company owner, who's supposed to be here, he's been stuck in traffic, I imagine.
I know.
Okay. We can tell things are improving, because two eighty-five traffic is resuming some normalcy now. We just moved the meetings down to two eighty-five. Ms. Smith accurately stated what has happened here. The applicant is relatively new to the area, and did not understand that permit was needed for the small wall, and that's where we got off to the wrong foot on it. The neighbors had some valid concerns, which we've addressed, and that's why the position has been withdrawn. So we appreciate what Ms. Smith has done in her report and making her presentation, I think that's accurate. Does the board have any questions?
There you go, for now, we'll see if there's, when we close for board comment, we'll probably bring it back up.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition, I think the, the two that we had previously were rescinded, if I'm not mistaken. Any others out there, anybody in the Zoom sphere? All right, then we'll close the public comment, and board, feel free to ask questions.
It was a determination by the director, so the code states that the director does have the ability to approve, accept SAP applications and approve them, but he also has the ability to say, no, I won't consider this administratively, you have to go before the board of appeals.
Much issues for me after that.
Well, the reason, yeah.
I understand, I understand, is it seems to me that the removal of it is more detrimental than keeping it. So I just wanna make sure, I think that's the whole thing, but anyway.
Yeah, I think the city's position, at least with the, sort of the case, is that there were multiple infractions that were unpermitted ahead of time, so they, that's another reason, it's not just the wall and its isolation, it's the fact that there was multiple infractions or unpermitted activity beforehand, so they're like, okay, this one we're gonna put on the record, so. There was some rights, and they mitigated those, right, we said, and it looks like the, the neighbors are somewhat happy with those mitigations. But that, that was another reason. I had a couple of questions for staff. One, the case talked a lot about the wall, that's existing and so forth. Tell us about the actual encroachment, which is really the variance, and there wasn't really anything in there about what the typical setbacks are, how much the encroachment is, I didn't see much of that, and we've got a lot of new board members, it might just be helpful to kind of walk through that.
So let me pull up the site plan. You probably can't read it very easy, because it's very small, but essentially, it is approximately three and a half feet from the side property line. The typical setback, without any sort of special administrative permit, is ten feet. Our requirements for retaining walls are ten-foot setback and under four feet. Anything within the setback, or anything over four feet, requires an additional special permit, or in this case, a variance. Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
So I think the applicant was referencing the special administrative permit requirements. There's two different things that you, there's a couple of different things you can ask a special administrative permit for special approval on. One of them is encroachment for ten percent of any measurable standard, so ten percent into a setback. And then there's separate standards for the retaining wall, I'm thinking maybe the ten percent was just a, you know, he missed, he cited the wrong criteria, or the wrong type of special administrative permit.
I have a question, so there were some disturbances based on this wall that was built without the correct permit. But it sounds like staff would have approved the permit, or, or the director would have approved the special administrative permit had it been sought prior to construction. So what sort of precaution or preventative measures might there have been in the special permit that would have avoided these disturbances that happened when they built the fence, or the, the wall without the permission, that, that caused difficulty or disruption to the other surrounding homeowners?
So through the special administrative process, the director has the discretion to, you know, approve or deny based on a certain set of criteria, part of that criteria is taking into consideration topography and effects on the public health, safety, and welfare. And also, through just the normal permitting process, we make sure that people are gonna have proper we make sure that people are going to have proper erosion control set up on their plan. We see, are they impacting their critical root zones of any trees? And so without that layer of review, we weren't able to see any of that beforehand and so they just proceeded with the work and the disturbance went sort of unmitigated. But through the special administrative permit process, the director could have set up certain parameters or, you know, excuse me, conditions that would have prevented any unnecessary disturbance or disturbance of neighbors' properties, things like that.
So it's not so much an issue at this point, because as you've said, removing the wall would clearly cause more disruption than would anyone care to create. But I'm just wondering if this were to, if this hadn't happened yet, through the survey, it may have come up, this is going to be an issue here, this is going to be an issue there, so there would have been maybe some qualifications or some modification of the plan had it been submitted like it was built that would have avoided some of the disruptions.
Yeah, through that extra layer of review, I mean, through general staff review and through general, you know, administrative permit review, we typically try and mitigate specifically, again, part of the criteria for a special administrative permit is there's not going to be a detriment to public health, safety and welfare of neighbors and the surrounding community. So, you know, we didn't initially have that extra layer of review, but like I said, the applicant has taken steps to mitigate those detriments to the public health, safety and welfare.
And the other neighbors are okay with it and withdrawn, they're
Yeah, so they originally wrote letters in opposition, the applicant spoke with them, worked it out civilly, outside sort of the parameters of the variance process and those neighbors rescinded their opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Any question, just general speaking, from my knowledge, when we say disturbance, what are we defining there? I know that can be kind of loosely defined and I know it's probably outside of the scope of this and where this product is at and everything, but like, I think of, you know, drainage, for example, as a potential disturbance, but not just moving, you know, whether you're reconfiguring things or leaving things as they were, maybe it was a problem before. And I know that when you go through the code enforcement process, because I've had to do that for like an internal dwelling in my house, if you catch something that's like bad, you're, you're on the hook for fixing it because it's yours now, right? So I was just a little bit curious as to how do we, how tight is that definition of disturbance? Is it just kind of like, again, discretionary? Is there certain parameters that you, like you mentioned earlier, that they look at with a closer lens?
I can't give you the word-by-word definition of disturbance, but we consider disturbance to be grading slash earthmoving, any major removal of, you know, trees and such where they're digging out the roots, basically. Anything where you have to get in there, move dirt around, bring in, you know, bobcats, things like that, that's all considered land disturbance.
So anything not done by hand, basically, right?
Yeah, and sometimes even work done by hand can be considered land disturbance if it's significant enough.
I do have one quick comment about the board, one issue I think of the board's assessment, maybe I'll get their take on this, but that there is, the hardship was not created at all by the applicant. I mean, you could argue, right, because of the scope of the project and so forth, they wouldn't need the wall. The prior dwelling, there was, there was an older wall that seemed to suffice, but now with this new project that they, they need the wall. So you could certainly argue that the applicant caused this hardship to put this wall in. It's not the case that it necessarily had to be there prior to this project and the scope of this project. The scope are different, smaller, different, you may not need the variance. It's not a huge deal, but I just don't agree with that particular assessment of all the criteria that we have. I think, I think you can make the case that the, that the application, the applicant caused the need for the variance.
Yeah, well, you know, if you talk about it, I mean, that's why I started the way I do. Because there's a lot of question, a lot of stuff that I wouldn't probably not consider or I would probably be telling someone, are you kidding me, did you talk about, you know, all this other? But because of the position that we are now and even with a special permit, it wouldn't have been granted, that's why we've come back. But you're definitely right. There's a lot of stuff missing that regularly you would need to get a variance here. And just a lot of little things, you know? But I guess, yeah, this, this is one of those practical and, you know what? If we didn't step in here, the city could have done it by themselves anyway, but you know what, people need to know, you need to get permits and you need to get permission to do certain things. So, I mean, and I do the director, you know, he exercises this option, but you're definitely right.
Yeah, in this case, they're being rewarded for not getting the permit. That's my, that's my point.
Except that they had to mitigate with neighbors.
Yeah, they took, they had to take the trees out because they infringed on the root balls and all that stuff. So I mean, that, that kind of stuff wouldn't have happened probably ahead of time.
Some of those, you don't want to think about it too much and just do it, you know, what's good for the, for the community that you live in as opposed to what's what you would, what you would.
Well, and that's a good point, too, I mean, I don't, I don't know the nature of the ownership of this property and things like that, but I don't want the city as a collective, whether it's board members or what have you, to get this reputation that, you know, maybe this is okay if it's a teardown, right? And we're doing a flip home or something like that versus a homeowner that's been living in their house and wants to make improvements. You just don't want that kind of cherry picking, whether, you don't want to see patterns of this kind of stuff. You know, you want to see it kind of go through the normal process if at all possible. But I agree, it's like, we could pick it apart all day, but at the end of the day, it's like, what's done is done, it's kind of just move forward.
All right, board, any more comment, questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve ZBA 21-12, approving the variance from Chapter 27, Section 269, encroaching into the side yard setback per the qualifications that staff set out, which if someone could put them up on the screen, I'll read them out.
No cheat sheets, no cheat sheets.
There's no conditions.
There's no conditions.
No conditions.
Oh, no conditions, okay. Condition free.
Second.
That's right.
It's already done, so just allow it to.
We, we have a second, right? According to Ryan, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I guess Ryan S. is not on, so it passes. Thank you. All right, board, any other business? Staff, any other business we need to address that you're aware of? No public comment? Board comment, give it to us. Or, yeah, or you could just have this page up when you have the completion of the The ruse, it's just a ruse.
And just another comment, too, we do appreciate, at least I do, I would assume others appreciate being educated, like the 25-foot buffer piece on the stake, that was great, you know? Would love to continue to be educated on this stuff, so.
Also, Claire, we can't hear you on
Yeah, these, these two aren't wired properly or something, they're maybe unplugged. Yeah, we're fine over here. Yeah, already just like you.
And I did want to thank Madeline, I think you did a great job tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, great.
You know, I mean, folks, I'm always impressed that the amount of knowledge that you guys have, it just shows that the, at least for my part, I, I could appreciate the amount of work that goes into preparing these things before they actually come there, so. Sometimes I think we're critical, but we do appreciate it.
Oh, no, I got, you missed my little note at the beginning, I think the new format's excellent, too, so it's Yeah, that too. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, that's nice. All right, I think with that, we can adjourn.